You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is February thirty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access support county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February seventh, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. We take a moment and silence all electronic devices as we stand for a pledge and assign a prayer. Ms. Nyla, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Presblevsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Presblevsky.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jagus.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman. We have eight present and no one absent. I mean, one absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. First, approval of the minutes of our January seventeenth regular meeting and January twenty-fourth special meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Presblevsky and a second by Councilman Paul Presblevsky. Ms. Nyla, on the roll call, please.
Ms. Jagus. Aye. Mr. Paul Presblevsky.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch. Aye. Mr. Don Presblevsky.
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Our reports of standing committees. Mr. Councilman Dabney.
Oh, none.
Having none, Finance Committee meeting. Councilwoman Tillman did notify me of her absence. There was only one thing on the agenda. You want to report on it?
Well, we didn't have a meeting because Councilwoman Tillman is has engagement out of town. The electronic transfer is on the claims is, I think, about the only thing for forty thousand dollars, I'm sorry, out of Riverboat. Or equipment. I don't see that it to be outlandish for the Park Department. I believe that is, I believe that's for their some sprayer or tank device. You know, I think, I believe that's, I don't think that for the golf course. So, I don't, I don't see a problem with that. I have no big comments about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Claims docket. Fund twenty-two thirty-five Riverboat claims, forty thousand dollars. Fund twenty-five oh four boy development, zero total claims, forty thousand dollars. There are motions to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve by Councilman Don Presblevsky and a second by Councilwoman Deitch. Ms. Nyla, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Presblevsky.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch. Aye. Mr. Don Presblevsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jagus. Aye. We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Reports of special or select committees.
Mr. President.
Councilman.
Yeah, and I think we need to add to our agenda here because before I would be reporting under reports of standing committees, these actually fall under on our committee sheets. It actually falls under boards or commissions.
Got you.
Okay, the sanitary liaison is under boards and commissions. So I think we need to add that to our agenda. So if somebody has something to say, they can go under that. Anyway, what I'd like to talk about is with the sanitary district and the five hundred thousand dollars that is owed to the city of Michigan City from the city of Long Beach, from the sanitary district study that took place out there in the installation of the sanitary sewer. The sanitary district has now filed legal action against the town of Long Beach, and they have sent them a letter pertaining to that fact. So there will be litigation or however they're going to agree, agree upon that. But that's where this whole issue stands now. And the second thing, I'm also a liaison to the solid waste district. And what we have done, the district voted upon to move the recycle box from where it was located out by the mall, Caitlin's Hardware up there in the parking lot, where it was always a eyesore and a mess. And I believe also a lot of the debris that was always piled up around that box blew over to St. John's Road when the wind was coming out of the south. So hopefully that'll cure some of that mess that's going up. So anyway, so let me just read the notification here from La Porte County Recycling Solid Waste District. It says, attention, the La Porte County Recycling, the electronics recycling trailer, which was formerly located out on Hitchcock Street there, in the public recycling dumpster formerly located behind Market Mall, have now been moved to a new location, and that location is now at the Michigan City Central Services Department at eighteen oh one Kentucky Street. So you can take everything over there. And it's being under close eye, and it's a lot nicer and neater and presentable to the public as it should be. And also, the La Porte County Recycling District is working, has worked with our water department, and they're going to be sending the same notice out in the water bills so that every resident in Michigan City will get a copy of this, so they're notified what's going on. Plus out there where the recycle box used to be, there's a big four by eight sign out there indicating where to take your recycling materials to now. So I just wanted to report on those two things, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Any other reports of special or select committees? Having none, remote reports from the mayor or other city officers and departments. Chief Corley.
Good evening, Council. Marty Corley, Chief Operations, Michigan City Police Department. Just wanted to report some things from the police department. We are, we just had a testing process February twenty-first, and we had about twenty applicants show up. Out of that twenty, we had about twelve move past, pass all phases. On that day, we actually did a one-day, had to do a one-day shop that day where we basically knocked out the written part, physical part interview, and then we started their background investigations. So we had twelve complete that. Out of the twelve, looks like, and still kind of early in their backgrounds. We hope to get them back here next week or so, but it looks like we might have about four to six that might complete that. Possibly more. Just some early reports from our background investigators. I know for sure about four to six. As you know, we're about seventy officers, we're seventh academy right now. So if we were to get four to six out of that process, that'd bring us up to seventy-six, which is pretty close to our complement of eighty-four. Also, we will be attending a fair at I U S B in South Bend, Indiana University of South Bend on February sixteenth, where we will have some of our members from our recruitment and retention team there to basically look for applicants. The job fair is geared towards criminal justice, so hoping to get some good applicants out of that. Also, our efforts with Big Ideal Company moving forward, we had, they came in last week and did a lot of our photos for our marketing piece. And they'll be back this Thursday, do some more photos and some more video interviews to move along with that process. And we'll also are gearing up for another applicant testing on March eighteenth. We're hoping to again do the same thing that we did on the twenty-first, to get more compliment, get more applicants, you know, with, and as Chief Forker has told you all throughout this whole process, that our goal is to get eighty-four officers by the end of this year. Also, just wanted to put on the council's mind that La Porte County, La Porte City, and Long Beach have all implemented significant tax, I mean, significant raises with their lit tax money. So just something to think about as we move forward. Again, I think that's one of the things that we've, again, Chief Forker has continued to express, you know, the concern with our pay and trying to get it up to par with the other surrounding communities. As we look throughout the communities, there's other communities that are now hitting heavy, and they have always hit heavy with and came to lateral transfers. And so just the other day, we're looking around, and now Valpo has a new flyer out there trying to get lateral transfers. So I think that's about the end of my report. Any questions?
Councilman President.
Yeah, chief, in, in, in another, like, the, you know, the shots fired system that we're installing now. And what's it called?
It's called the flock rabbing.
Yeah, the flock.
Yeah, gunshot detection.
Yeah, what we stand exactly with that, because I see a lot of the poles going in now with the flock. And I guess those are the, you know, microphones on.
So.
Where do we stand with the installation of that?
So as you know, right now, we are actually about, say, about, we're about twelve to fifteen cameras in our inner city limits. We have another, actually, probably another twelve outside of city limits that, because of NDOT, we have to, we have some permit, not permit problems, but they're holding that process up a little bit. But we have about pretty much all of our cameras in the city installed. And we've actually been using them, helping with a couple of investigations so far already. And then gunshot detection portion will start in the spring. They're actually been in contact with our planning department to start. There's going to be some things we have to deal with the poles. So we have to see which poles are owned by the city, which owned by the state, and make some nautical poles we might have to use. So we have to, but they have been in contact with the planning department to get those permits going to start the gunshot installation in the spring.
Will both systems turn on out one pole?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Because I've seen those poles being installed, I wonder what they were. I called the street Sean Smith, and he told me what they were, but I just want to see how many, you know, are in. So we're pretty much on the way to getting that completed.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. I want one question real quick. Out of the applicants that you had, twenty, then that's twelve, then the forty-six, are any of those local residents?
Um, I'm trying to picture in my head, because I don't know, out of the four or six, I don't, I don't know exactly who those people are. But I will say out of the twenty, I would say over half were local applicants that came. So I would say out of the twelve, that we have at least at the minimum half, yeah. Yeah, we have, we do have some local people in those, in the applicant process now that will make it throughout, make it past the background investigation.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Tommy Colavich, Fire Merritt Commissioner. Attention, elderly mobile teenagers, college students, and young adults. Michigan City, age sixteen and up. Michigan City, Washington Park lifeguard is needed. Lifeguard pay twenty-five fifty an hour, assistant head lifeguard twenty-six fifty an hour, head lifeguard twenty-seven fifty-four an hour requirements. Must have obtained a lifeguard certification, must be age sixteen years of age. Must have a valid driver's license. Will have a free waterfront lifeguarding where states to be determined. Submit applications to the Michigan City Fire Department Administration Building at twenty-five ten East Michigan Boulevard or City Hall at one hundred East Michigan Boulevard. For more information, send us a message or contact us at two one nine eight seven three one four four zero extension four zero zero four. You can email Public Information Officer, tiaferg at tiaferg at michigancity dot com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colavich. Any other reports? Petitions?
There are no petitions.
Communications?
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office from Controller Hoth Master regarding engineering service payments between one one of seventeen and twelve thirty-one of twenty-two. Correspondence was also received from Controller Hoth Master listing outstanding checks as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two from the year twenty-twenty. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office from Brian Wright, President of the F O P, Dunes Lodge seventy-five, requesting to open contract negotiations as soon as possible between the Michigan City Police Department and the City of Michigan City. Correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on February first, twenty-twenty-three from Councilwoman Jagus regarding the appointment to Social Status of African American Males Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla.
Mr.
Councilman President.
Yes, I would like to ask for a amendment to the agenda to add ordinance and resolution concerning legal fees.
We have a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a second? Second. We have a second by Councilman Presblevsky, does oh, well, Ms. Nyla, on the vote.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presblevsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Presblevsky.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
And for the record, we do have the resolution and ordinance in front of us. Do you have it also, Ms. Nyla?
Would you like me to read that resolution first?
You can read it at the back of the, at the end of everything that's posted already. So can you please read our first resolution?
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the local road and street fund, number twenty-two oh two for the year twenty-twenty-three in Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Presblevsky.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Any comments from the sponsor?
Yes, Mr. President, what this deals with is the street department went out for bids for a backhoe, and the bid came back higher at one, at one hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars versus what was budgeted for the backhoe at one hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. So there's a six thousand dollars difference in between the bid and how much money was allocated. So what they're doing in the street department and the local road and street fund, we're going to decrease the repairs and maintenance supplies and increase the other machinery and equipment so that we can buy this for the street department.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Dabney.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Councilman Dabney and a second by Councilman Paul Presblevsky. Ms. Nyla, on the vote, please.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch. Aye. Mr. Don Presblevsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presblevsky.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Can you please read our next resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only determining that funding for certain outstanding purchase orders should be encumbered and authorizing the city controller to encumber such funds, and this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Any comments from the sponsor? Ms. Tillman is present. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Does anyone from the Controller's Office want to add? Having none, any comments from the council?
I, I would like to know from the Controller's Office, this is just our regular, what we do normally each year, right? Thank you. I move for adoption.
So, yes, we have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilman Paul Presblevsky. Ms. Nyla, on the vote, please.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presblevsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presblevsky.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Can you please read our next resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only appropriating funds for feasibility program and concept design study for the Michigan City recreational and sports complex. And this is introduced by Mr. Matt.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like permission to read the resolution into the record in its entirety.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is a resolution on funding a sports complex in Michigan City. So I'll just get right into it real quick. Appropriating funds for a feasibility program and concept design study for a Michigan City Recreation Sport Complex. Whereas Michigan City, Indiana is a unit of government within the state of Indiana with the authority to provide for the safety and comfort of its residents and visitors, promote public welfare, increase public health, and enlarge economic opportunities within the city. Whereas Michigan City is dedicated to providing the best possible advantages through its citizens through good government, innovating ideas, and opportunities to grow and flourish within the community. And whereas other municipalities, municipal units within the state of Indiana, such as Hammond, South Bend, Crown Point, Maryville, all have created sports plexes within their communities for the health, wellness, and benefit of their citizens and visitors. And whereas these complexes have been successful in providing a location for adult residents and visitors to increase their health through increased levels of activity, as well as provide space for classes, meetings, and community fellowship. Whereas these complexes have been successful in providing a location for youth residents and visitors of a safe place, and offers visitors a safe place to participate in recreational and organized sports activities, additional academic and recreational activities within a controlled environment. And whereas these communities have seen a positive impact, positive economic impact from these sports complexes through the creation of part, full-time, and temporary employment opportunities, as well as additional spending within a concentrated area. Whereas studies have shown that community sports complexes provide a multitude of benefits to communities through continued health, reduction in stress, increases, increases in property values, cultural diversity, tourism, public safety, and reduced youth crime rates. And whereas upon the consideration of a sports complex, the common council has determined that the building of a sports complex within the municipal borders will provide for the safety and comfort of its residents and visitors, promote public welfare, increase public health, and enlarge economic opportunities within the city. Whereas American Structure Point Incorporated has submitted a proposal to aid Michigan City in determining the feasibility of a sports complex within the municipal borders of the city, including meetings with community stakeholders, the designs of the venues and the floor plans, the assessments of pre-possible locations to take advantage of all available incentives to benefit the sports complex, and a detailed cost estimate to, to build the final design, and attached hereto is Exhibit Eight. I've got two members of Structure Point here. Mr. John Kennedy and Chris Murphy. And they're going to address any questions we may have, and I'm predicting and probably we should have a in detail, in detail public workshop to really dig down into what we're asking for, what we're needing, giving them a much more clear vision of what we can actually have here in Michigan City. And a lot of it is market-driven, where we are, where we're located, what our needs are. You know, some of the things we talked about here, education and literacy, I mean, I'm just big on those things. And I think it would be a total transformation of our city if we do something like this. President Biden said, you know, show me your budget, and I'll show you your values, and I, that's, I truly, truly believe that. So with that said, did you gentlemen want to say something or have anything prepared?
Good evening, council people. I'm Chris Murphy with American Structure Point. We have put together a scope of work and a fee schedule, as Councilman Mac has noted, to prepare a feasibility study that will involve a market analysis, need, demand, demographic review of the entire community so that we can put together a development plan that we're all comfortable knowing will get used by the community to the benefit of the community. We have a subconsultant on our team, Johnson Consulting, who is a specialist in reviewing markets for sports facilities so that they can assess what the demand will be, what the details of the facility that will best be successful for Michigan City and, and the, the community that will be benefited from that sports complex. With that, I can answer any questions that the council people have.
Any question? So as part of your, you know, scope of work, are you going to look at financing? Is it going to be public-private combination? Are you going to give some options on how we can finance something like this?
We, we can give a history of our experience working with other communities and how those projects were financed, but the particular details of how the city of Michigan City would like to finance would have to be, you know, worked in concert with you, the council.
And I just comment on that, that I visited Hammond's facility and the Maryville facility. One of those facilities were built totally with TIF dollars. And I believe it was the Hammond facility, am I correct? Or was it the Maryville? One of those two, they're two distinct different type of facilities. One has like three courts, community center. The other one has like eight courts, includes softball, soccer, I mean, they're just a, a whole list of amenities, and they're trying to enlarge. That's how much business that is actually bringing there, and the benefit to those communities, the, the youth are just tremendous. They all rage about it. But what this particular amendment is asking for is two hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's an approximate two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar range for, for this study to include and I'm asking for it out of the ARPA funds or the, or Riverboat fund.
Yeah, one quick question. Aside from the feasibility study, since the Maryville and Hammond facilities were mentioned, what, what are the estimated costs of facilities akin to that?
They're two different facilities. The Hammond, as the councilman noted, the Hammond facility is strictly a sports complex. It provides for basketball, volleyball, has eight basketball courts, that can be sixteen volleyball courts, also has an indoor soccer complex. The Maryville Community Facility is more of a community facility. It has three basketball courts utilized by, most usage is after-school programs. Kids will come over there while their parents are still finishing their day of work. But it also has a, an event center attached to it, available for weddings. It has a kitchen involved in there and other events within the community. So it truly functions as a multipurpose community facility. Also has an outdoor football field that can be converted to soccer field with the parking complex. It truly serves an all-season community center for the community.
So I was asking, what's the, the, what made it cost?
The cost.
What would the value of a property like that be?
Uh, the the Hammond facility, um that was built for uh something in the neighborhood of uh eighteen to twenty million dollars.
John, I'm John Kennedy with American Structure Point. Uh, the Hammond Sports Plex was built at eighteen million dollars. The Maryville Community Center was just shy of twenty-two. Um, and it mostly was because of the interior finishes, just like Chris was saying, it has more of a banquet facility. So the finishes were Hammond is strictly hard surfaces, sports courts.
Okay. And about how old are those facilities?
Uh, Maryville just opened up in twenty twenty-one and the Hammond Sports Plex was twenty nineteen, about twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Thank you.
And just to go back to one of the questions, Johnson Control, Johnson Consulting will look at financial analysis as uh with Hammond, they generate a lot of revenue from sports events, rent. So they'll look at rent, some financial analysis, sponsorships, concession. Uh, where revenue can be generated from those facilities as well as they'll look at some of the uh staffing that will be required to run the facility. And as you said, you could look at private entities running it versus having a park department do it.
Thank you, Councilor President.
Yeah, I have a uh a question. And thank you for giving us the uh estimated construction costs at those times. But uh versus the Turner Construction Cost Index. So what would those numbers be in twenty twenty-three and not in twenty seventeen? Uh, with the Hammond, with the Hammond uh construction, I believe it was like seventeen or eighteen million, I believe you said. And I think under the Turner Construction Cost Index, it's twenty-three million. What do we cost to build that same structure today? And in Maryville, uh, it was twenty-two million, three hundred. And today it would be twenty-five million.
That that's probably correct.
Yeah.
And and realistically, as we get through the study feasibility process, make some determinations, working with you on a on a funding schedule. Um, you know, we're probably looking at twenty twenty-five for construction.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, any comments from the public?
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. First, I want to thank American Structure Point for putting the manhole covers in the turning lanes on on South Ohio Street. That was a really, really nice job you did there. Um, now Nancy Oregon said in the nineteen eighties, just say no. I feel this is going to become another Genesis Convention Center in Gary. Uh, Michigan State just don't have the capacity to own and operate a facility to this magnitude. Um, Michigan State, we don't even have the capacity to own and operate the splash pad. Um well, we're probably gonna, you know, we're gonna have a thirty-five thousand for Boys and Girls Club on 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 cool, on Cool Spring Events. That's gonna be sufficient. I'm gonna have a gym, classroom, the whole works. This just isn't a viable project for us. Um, I recall nineteen, this needs to be a private project, if anything. I recall back in nineteen ninety-five, back during senior council member, Paul, was the original tenure on the council. Buddy Miles's Chicago was proposed putting a hockey stadium across from the Minnesota airport. That kind of fell through with our county commissioners. Mayor Wilson, she wanted to put it at the old Memorial Hospital site where the Grayfield site now exists. Um uh, yeah, that's um I just feel that 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 this should just just die as a lack of a second. Um, we just need to terminate all negotiations with the season, this is all negotiation with all these parties effective. I mean, I believe Goff Construction is going to be the general contractor out of Maryville through the article I read in the Times. Um, it's just not for Michigan City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malavich. Any other comments from the public?
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Um, if this was to go through, who would own this building? Will it be the Park of Recreation or the city of Michigan City? I I I just, I'm not understanding this because I just heard them say something about private. And then if we're spending tax dollars, it should be the park departments. Um, I'm all for trying to get our kids something to do. I'm not going to be totally against this. Uh the size of it might be be able to be negotiated. We all know these kids need something to do. So I'm not going to speak all the way down about it. But if we're going to take city's tax dollars and put it behind anything, it need to be owned by the city. That's all I want to say about that. Like just on me, Mr. Chan, what you think?
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Ernie Hollen, three oh two Gladys Street. I I I agree, we need something for the kids, but uh at that expense, I don't know that city can even afford that. I mean, we turned over two gyms and a pool at Elston to the Y. Mr. Dabney used to run the midnight basketball and and he lost that gym. So they can't run a midnight basketball game because the Y has control of both gyms in that school. There would be plenty for the kids to do there. Now the Y charges them if they want to come in and use that gym. Is this, will they charge to get into this? Or is this going to be free?
The weighted other communities and especially communities with casinos uh all over, I could point to a lot more than just the two Indiana work is that the residents are free to the residents. And uh there's other financing, there's uh there's groups that give money, there's Transit Operating District, if we get the right spot, there's a lot of ways that money can actually flow in.
They they had issues with the midnight basketball, some, not a lot, because I worked at Elston them nights there. Unfortunately, Mr. Dabney, who was kind enough to let two boys in and they went into the bathroom and set the garbage can on fire. So so who is going to control them in this facility? I mean, they're going to need somebody supervising and constantly because kids will be kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallman. How have?
Angela Hensman, two thirty-seven Leo Avenue. Um, I think we're missing the point here. So a sports complex is not just a place for kids to spend after school. This is an economic opportunity for our our community. It brings tournaments, it brings other outside teams, it gives our our teams, our students, a place, a quality place to practice and have their their tournaments and their um competitions. Um, so I think what we're missing is it's not just another Boys and Girls Club. Um, it's not just another YMCA. Um, this is a large-scale sports complex that will bring in outside um support from other organizations as well. And I think what you'll find if you do the study is that the other facilities have uh will be making up their money um in short order, that there is a lot of economic opportunity with this plan. And I hope that you don't just dismiss it because it's another place for kids to have after school. Like um those other places learned, you can turn it into a multifunctional um community center that can be used, can be rented out. Um, and so I just, I hope that we're not seeing this as just another Boys and Girls Club, but that this is actually an economic opportunity for development in our community while at the same time bringing a betterment of life, quality of life to the citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Hansman. Any other comments from the public?
Good evening, Brian Gross, eight thirty West Sixth Street, uh Sports Center. Something for kids to do in the wintertime, fall and spring when it's nasty out makes a lot of sense. Um, other communities have actually opened up their gyms in their schools for things like this, gyms in other parts of the building. Now, I understand the schools are not part of this organization. They have their own organization. Um, so I don't even know if that's feasible here. One thing I would be against is having an event center and renting it out and competing with all their private businesses that already do that in this city. That doesn't make sense for the city to be competing against private enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Any other comments from the public?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna have another use. Kathy Stransky, two two three East Barker Ave here in town. Um, who's going to transport these kids? We had the YMCA and we couldn't get them there. We had the Alston Building, we couldn't get them there. Who's going to transport all these kids? Who takes that on? Does the city take it on? Do you think the parents are really going to run them out there all the time? It ain't going to happen. We've seen it. I don't think it's a good idea. I think it's a bad idea for Michigan City. We should look at something on a smaller base in maybe the neighborhoods in, like he said, the old school buildings and stuff. I don't think that we have the people in the area like they do in Maryville, like they do in Hammond. We don't have that draw. We just don't have it. And I think it's a bad idea for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stransky. Any other comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Well, it's my understanding, we, I went to your meeting you had at the Hope Center a few months ago. You want to put this thing on Gilfield, you know, the the school system can transfer their properties over to municipality, just like they did with the the eleventh in Ohio for the fire station and then for the police station with Eastport. Um uh, you know, you do know, we all do know that ever since uh Michigan City area schools closed Elston, what became Elston Middle School, the state-based peripheral education. Um, our children, the third ward, they'll happen to be bused to an entirely different section of the city so they can receive a secondary public school education beyond the sixth grade. Uh, you know, I wasn't around back then, but you know, back in the nineteen sixties, the history books teach us that uh the civil rights movement was all about we shall overcome, not we shall come over. Now, what kind of promise is that you're giving to our kids? I mean, we have to change to have our Michigan City High School song to, we all live in this yellow submarine by the Beatles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Sean, real quick, I just have a question for the Structure Point guy.
Uh, Councilman Depp.
Uh, yeah. At the end of, when you were talking, you said the decision on whether it would be run by the city or a private entity. We had the same conversation with the, talking about the train station over here with double track project. Could you explain the difference if it's run by the city versus a private entity for the city?
Uh, the primary differences is if it's run by a private organization, they're going to be interested in the revenue business model. Um, if it's run by the city, it it will be uh in the best interest of the community um to uh uh make it a a successful operation for the community. The the Hammond uh sports complex and the Maryville Community Center are both run by the city. Um, in Crown Point, there are facilities that are both run by the city and run by private organization. So the business model works either way. Um, but in our experience, they're mostly run by the city for the benefit of the community.
Can you clear up uh tax implications?
I can't, uh, no. Um, but uh that you know, some some expertise will be part of this Johnson Consulting team with regard to that.
And I was, I was asking because I I thought I remembered a conversation that if it was like if our train station was run by the city versus a private entity, it would be tax dollars into the city if it were a private entity that ran. And I just wanted to make sure, try to get that cleared up if we could. So I guess I'll wait for the workshop to get the answer to that. But I think I'm correct with that. But I just wanted to have somebody to back that up before I talk about it. But thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I apologize. I don't have the answer to that question.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Deitch.
Um, I guess for the mayor, because we don't have the authority to appropriate the money or enter into a contract from the council. So I guess I'm trying to understand where the mayor sits on this because um the resolution is just a resolution, but we can't appropriate or enter into any contract. So um, I don't know if you've had conversations with Mr. Mack already in Structure Point.
Uh, no. Yes, sir. No, I'm not, Council Lady Deutsch. I uh I've thought about this and I think that Michigan City's evolved over the years. Our student population keeps going down. Years ago in the six, we had a tremendous situation of cooperation with the school system in the sixties. Every gymnasium in Michigan City was open Saturday for the for the kids. Uh, I don't know who's responsible for that ending, but it's not happening anymore. Now, in terms of the of the finances, two thousand seventeen, the previous administration had Michigan City over seventy million dollars in debt in bonds. Now, at this point in time, we're recovering, we're in the low twenties. I'm really not interested in taking on a lot of bond debt because we may be taking, we're we're going to assume a little bond debt on the station block because it's gotten so big. I think we have to be awfully careful about how we spend our money. I know the the YMCA is not really doing well with the school system as far as maintenance of the building because I'm I'm there every day. And and I think that the Elston property, if the Performing Arts Center were to be included in that, they do have banquet facilities and the Performing Arts Center would would really benefit us. But I I I just can't, I would not support a grassroots uh twenty-eight million dollar project or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilman Mac.
Uh, just to uh clear up some of the uh things that might have been said that I don't think are quite accurate. Um, the draw for the event center, the events aren't, the event center in those places aren't speaking of like concerts or, you know, meetings other than maybe small meeting rooms. Uh, the events would be what is drawing those Hammond uh 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 profitability are like the homeschool championship. So homeschoolers have no athletic uh venues. They rent that out and have tournaments for homeschoolers in a sixty-mile radius. Uh, they've got a championship for charter schools. All of these charter schools that have these simple locations, those kids want to be involved. So they rent out space. Uh, the AAU and the things that we do and uh, you know, there there is so much that is going on in the marketplace of developing youth that centers around off-season athletic availability, off-season availability of adults uh to give direction with children. And to me, that's where our opportunity lies because a lot of our children don't have built-in great direction in their immediate vicinity. And when you put these two people together, the the people with uh the ability to instill some discipline, that's where where we uh we can win. But um, the draw is there and I will um agree and disagree with the promise of the future of Michigan City because past performance does not dictate the future performance. So if if everything is based on the fact that we've never been able to do this and we don't have the talent to do that and it's not possible for us to manage that, that is a low bar of expectations and I I just will never ever uh put this, the Bible says something about the sins of the father on the kids or something to that effect. And I I will never say that the next generation coming behind us has to perform in the same low standard way that we have in the past on on things like this. So that's all I have to say.
I wasn't. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Deitch.
Yeah. So um, the other thing I would say though is I I believe that we do need um opportunities for, you know, our students, but I I feel like the workshops should come first with with the per, you know, with with the entities, whether it's the school system, Boys and Girls Club of the YMCA. They're looking for to build a new space as well and a feasibility study that is probably a quarter of the amount of this study that they're going to be doing here shortly for Michigan City. And I feel like there's so many partnerships that could happen where there's so many partnerships that could happen where no one is on the hook for a total cash amount like this. And I feel like the workshop should be a public workshop where all entities that impact children are involved before we commit. Well, we can't commit it, we can, we can, we could pass this and nothing will happen because it still will be up to the administration to bring this forward to the council. Um, with any appropriation for this, so um, my whole thought is, why won't we have the public workshop now? Or get all the players to the table so that everybody can say their say or what they're doing, what their vision is and what's happening versus passing this and it sit for the mayor, he's already told us, he's not gonna support it. So I guess um, there's not gonna be an appropriation coming from the administration for it, so I guess that would be my concern, why not have some type of full-on engagement workshop first and then come back to this would be my only um, suggestion.
Any other comments from the council? Uh, Councilman President.
I've listened to uh, a lot of the comments from the, or I have been listening to everyone's comments and uh, I think that what uh, Councilwoman Deitch has brought up is, is a major concern of mine is that I think we're putting a cart before the horse and uh, to simplify matters, but also uh, when you're talking about you know, maybe or probably in the area of thirty million dollars. That's a huge, huge investment. And we have so many other things going on right now. Um, our, our uh, public uh, municipal services need a lot of equipment. Police and fire. We have a, a sewer obligation on four hundred and twenty acres that's not fully funded. We have another obligation to a, another annex that we were promised that would be developed into something great, but we're, we're on the hook for that. And also um, where, I would like to know, I mean, basically, where in the heck are we gonna get forty million dollars in? How are we gonna finance this thing? Is, is there, anybody can just say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna do a bond issue. I don't, I, I don't know, you, you know, we gotta have a major amount of public support to do something like that. I'm not talking about what I want. I'm not talking about what ten people want. You know, what does the whole community want? And I think that's why we need to have a, a, you know, a big input. What do the, what do the re- what do the retired people want? I mean, I think the aging population of our community is, is we're over sixty percent of our population is over sixty years old. So, uh, I mean, I, I think I'm pretty close on those figures and I don't have a problem with that. But what I am saying is that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. And uh, I, I have a I just would like to have some, gimme, gimme something here because who's gonna be on the hook for this? Who's gonna be on the hook for maintaining this building? Who's gonna be on the hook for putting people in this building, to man this building and to run the programs? How, okay, we can do a study, but we all know it's gonna cost a heck of a lot of money. Uh, it's gonna cost a lot of money, you know? Oh, and one other thing? Uh, there's also a security thing in there. Who, uh, what are we gonna do about security? So I think with that being said, that we need to, we should either table this and see what, see what you guys, what we can come up with on a workshop and what the community, how the community feels on this. I mean, I think we need to talk to the park board to find out how they are gonna manage this, cause I know that's where it's gonna go. Has anybody talked to the park board about this issue? Does anybody talk to the park board? Our superintendent's here. So anyway, I think that we should table this uh, in- indefinitely for right now. And, and so in a form of motion.
We have a motion to table indefinitely. Having no second motion does. Uh, any other comments from the council?
Mr. President.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Don, let us listen.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Councilman Mack, first of all, I wanna applaud you for thinking outside the box. Trying to get something going in this direction with this type of uh, facility, and I have heard comments from folks that have been at the Hammond facility and they say that it's uh, it's very nice. I guess the mayor, I haven't been at the Maryville one either. And they say that that's very nice also. And I believe they are probably very nice. Uh, City Hammond, I believe that's the, the population there is a hundred thousand people that live in the City Hammond. I believe they have maybe possibly a little bit more financing I don't know than what we have. And I don't know how Maryville paid for theirs and what financing mechanisms they use. But I know here in uh, Michigan City, being on the city council, what our budget exists, just like every other council person. You know, right now we have two point five million dollars sitting in the river pole. That's all we have, is two point five million dollars sitting in the river pole. Uh, now we're asking for two hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, which is what, maybe a tenth of that, yeah, that's a tenth what's in River Pole now for this, for the study. And there's other projects that we're all aware of here on the console that need to be done. And projects need to be prioritized in the city, which I haven't seen that yet. And I'm not being critical, but I haven't seen a structured prioritized list of what the city really wants to work on to get things accomplished. Uh, this here, uh, i- it's a great project. I've dealt with kids, I've coached, I'm not gonna call it kids, I'm gonna call it children, young adults. I've been in the coaching business when I first came to Michigan City. I coached P B football fifteen year, or not fifteen, ten years uh, in the Boys Football League. Did that, coached all kinds of sports, and I would love to have, I would love to have top-notch facilities and shiny floors and shiny chairs and, and everything like that. But, you know, we were down at the old Ames Field and we were down, when we were down under the locker rooms, we cleaned them up, we painted them, we made it happen. And we didn't need to have a brand-new facility to play football at that time. Uh, to me, looking at the cost of this project, whether it was cost, take for example, let's just use the Ham, the, the Maryville site for an example now. At this time, it would cost twenty-five million, uh, yeah, twenty-five million dollars to build a structure like that. And then the gentleman from Structure Point said that construction would probably start uh, twenty twenty-five, if this thing was to go through. Alright, so you gotta look at probably another ten percent in cost. So now you're looking at close to you know, twenty-eight million? Let's just say thirty million before it's all done and said. So we opened the doors, well now we got NIPSCO to pay for. And we all know that NIPSCO is going up, and if you just got your bill this month, I think everybody had an increase on their gas. Uh, the expense of operating this at this point in time, at this point in time of the financial condition, Michigan City, in my opinion, cannot afford to do this. And I'm gonna leave it at that, and I know some folks would like to see it and they think it's a great idea. But I have to be realistic, I have to go by the numbers and I have to be accountable to all the citizens in, in Michigan City. So I can't uh, support the resolution even for the study. Uh, cause I just have a hard time supporting anything that's gonna cost the city twenty-eight million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council?
Just one last quick uh,
Councilman Mack.
You know, I would, I would love for this to go to the public, that is uh, the entire premise. Uh, this, this is something that um, should go really before the public and if, if the public and especially parents of school-aged children right now. If those people believe that uh, what the sentiments I'm hearing, then I mean, hey, it, it is what it is. Um, but the way I view it is the ARPA funds that we've spent uh, quite a bit on. Um, different things, investments, future, uh, mostly uh, business-related. Um, and the Riverboat Funds, which has never been a uh, community-pointed uh, funding for, in, in the history that I, that I'm really aware of. Uh, so the, the, the argument to me is gonna be people, programming or cars and concrete. And I think there's gonna be a change uh, in the nation, um, as far as where we put our money. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, any other comments from the council? Councilwoman Jigus.
Yes, um, so what I'm hearing here is that people think there has to be more programming and has to be more things for kids to do. But like the logistics of the order of this right now, even if we approve this, we're not gonna get any, any funding. So I think our best, you know, best idea would be to have a public workshop, really get some brainstorming going. And maybe this is not the facility, but maybe we can get some solutions that are not this expensive, so. I mean, my thought would be to table this until we have a workshop and hear from the community and other organizations. So that, that would be my motion.
Uh, we have a motion to table pending a workshop by Councilwoman Jigus. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There was a second by Councilman Davy, um, it's not upon the vote.
Yeah.
Mr. President, just a point of order or verification, is there a, a timeframe that Councilwoman Jigus would like to include in that motion?
Because we already said him, definitely. Cause we already said him, definitely.
Definitely, just so that there's not confusion.
Well, I would say after the work, once we have a workshop, so I guess that's.
I need a timeframe to conduct the workshop.
Oh. Uh, I'll say within one month.
And then, so that would be the second, do they accept that?
I accept that.
So we have a motion to
Okay.
Table pending the workshop within two meetings. And it's seconded by Councilman Devon. Miss Nile upon the vote.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Nay.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Davy?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Nay.
And Mr. Mack?
Aye.
We have six in favor and two opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nile. Can you please read our uh, added resolution by title alone?
A resolution by title only appropriating funds for feasibility program and concept design study for the Michigan City Recreations. Nope, that's what I.
I was gonna say.
Sorry about that.
A resolution by title only supporting the hiring of professional legal services to oppose the proposed NIPSCO rate increase for electric utility service, and this is introduced by Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
I uh,
Comments from the others?
I uh, off, I uh, supported this resolution for several reasons. And one of them is that uh, we need to be at the table with uh, this proposed rate increase. And by taking on legal uh, consul that has experience in doing this, that we will have a say on negotiating anything that comes out of the hearings. And we have to realize that, yes, we passed a resolution for uh, to be entered in to the record, but also as the hearing in Indianapolis is before a uh, uh, hearing judges. And this is uh, more or less held as a court proceeding in uh, where you have to enter information by, and write briefs and you have the right to question any of NIPSCO's expertise, expert witnesses. And I believe that it's in our best interest for the ratepayers of the city and also for the uh, economic well-being to save money for uh, businesses that, you know, as uh, Councilman Don Prespolinski alluded to that, yeah, we, people got their bills and they had a increase.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to add a uh, amendment to this resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, all the council members gotta copy the amendment.
Yes.
Uh, and, and I'll go ahead and read it. And what it is, is Councilman Don Prespolinski is proposing the following amendment to the proposed additional appropriation for twenty thousand dollars for legal services to read follows. Uh, decrease Riverboat Fund fifteen, uh, twenty-two thirty-five. The un- unappropriated balance of fifteen thousand and increase professional legal services to fifteen thousand. So basically, what I'm asking for is for the legal fees to be capped at fifteen thousand dollars rather than the twenty thousand dollars. And if the uh, attorneys need more money, then they can come back to us and explain to us why we need, why they need more money to, to proceed with this uh, process. And already speak, and, and I spoke to the legal counsel and, you know, they had, they really had no issue with it. They said, you know, basically do what you'd like to do, but they could, they could still work uh, the contract the way that they wanted to do, so I suggest that we reduce that twenty thousand to fifteen thousand and get the reports back from them that they do need more money and why they need more money.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, any comments from the?
You need a second?
Yeah.
I second that.
I have a motion to amend and a second. Um, it's, it's not upon the vote.
Mr. John Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Davy?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nile. Any other comments from the council?
Uh, I would like to make one more comment. Okay, as far as this resolution goes. Uh, I would like to make one more comment. Okay, as far as this resolution goes. And uh, and af- after things uh, after the air kind of got cleared and we knew exactly what the focus was here. Uh, I agreed with uh Councilman Paul Prespolinski uh uh moving forward uh with this uh legal action against uh NIPSCO. And the, the bottom line is you know, Michigan City, as far as I know, is the only city in Northwest Indiana that put a resolution together to send down to the I U R C. As far as I know right now, Michigan City is the only city in Northwest Indiana that is hiring legal counsel to go down to Indianapolis to fight for Michigan City and to fight for everybody that's sitting out here in the audience tonight, cause this all affects us. Cause if that rate does not get reduced from sixteen point nine percent, then by the July of twenty twenty-four, everybody's gonna be paying, and I'm just gonna say possibly another hundred and fifty dollars a month in electrical uh bills. And the city of Michigan City is gonna be paying a lot more in electrical bills. So what we're trying to do as a city, as an administration, is fight for the people that live in Michigan City and see where, see where Washington's out at. It may not, it, it, we may not, we may not get to sixteen point nine. You know, what we wanna do is get lower. So if, if we even get it down to ten percent, that's even a uh, a win-win for everybody uh involved. So that's what he just wanted to add that. So I think by the console, you know, voting on this and approving this, I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I have one quick question. Um this uh fifteen thousand dollar figure or the twenty thousand dollar figure, was there a proposal or, or invoice or where did this most figure come from?
There was not an invoice on it yet, but I believe uh Amber Amber LaPage, our legal uh uh consul for the city is, is uh talking about um how many hours of work that they're proposing and uh not to exceed a certain amount of hours in the, in the, in the uh tran- it, in the communication in the, so I believe that what I, what I have been discussing that they're looking at um not exceeding this amount, but starting off with something like fifty, fifty hours. And then going from there, I believe Amber's going to, but Amber's gonna be overseeing it. And, and here's another thing is that uh it, Mrs. LaPage, Attorney of LaPage also stated that she did not wanna take it, excuse me, out of their legal fund because she uses that to, to pay things and, and they were gonna do that, but they, they wanted to do it this way and make it make it better to budget the money that she has in her account. Or whatever she, she has to pay things off.
Any other comments from the council? Sorry.
Motion to uh
A motion to approve by Councilman Devon. Uh, Paul Prespolinski is second by Councilman Don Prespolinski. It's not upon the vote, please.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. uh Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Can you please read our first ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Riverboat and Rainy Day Fund for infrastructure, water and sewer extension and annexed property on the city's east side. This is introduced by Ms. Dyche. Mr. Paul Prespolinski and Mr. Simmons.
And this will be our formal public hearing. Any comments from the sponsors?
Yes, this is the obligation that we have for the annexed property um that we've been discussing for a while. We've had a workshop on it previously as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the other sponsors? Councilman Prespolinski.
I, I wanna really, you know, this is second reading and uh this was something that one, one of these bills that is obligations that the city has. And with the way things are going with uh COVID and uh prices of materials, that this projected cost is probably gonna double by at least twenty-five percent. So we're gonna be um allocating more money in the, in the long run. And uh I was hoping that by this time, since um we had the workshop that I called to uh at least get a date that we knew what the date was on uh our projected date that we had to have the services delivered. That I would like to know who is doing any, who did it? Any projected, uh, I don't know the exact terminology, uh, not service cost, but um Jewel, can you help me out with this on what they do on the uh, uh projecting the costs on a, a project like this?
Are you asking what impact it might have? A study of what impact it might have on the infrastructure going forward?
Is that what, it's not an impact study, is it? It's some other study.
Certainly, it's just an analysis, but I think that's what you're referring to.
Right.
Yeah.
And what I wanted to know is, did the sanitary district do that yet and the water department do that yet? Can because those are additional costs in the range of three hundred, three, three hundred and fifty or maybe four hundred thousand. Do we, do we know if they did that yet, Ma- Mayor?
The last uh look that both sanitary and water department took at this, the last look that they made at it was probably a good eight weeks ago or more, maybe twelve. And they, they, their price was still good. They were still looking at about seven point eight million for services. And the timeframe uh was impacted heavily per water piping material issue, as you already know.
Right.
If we had acted at that time, we would have received the material four weeks before the end of two thousand twenty-three. Four, four, the deadline is twenty-four. So they, they probably should be another update on material costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Perry. Any other comments from the others? Okay, this is our formal public hearing. Any comments from the public?
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I remember you used the president the first time. And I just wanna say this, cause a lot of people was against it, and you stood it. You stood firm on this. Thank you for the rainy day fund. A lot of us forget about that. A lot of people was against it, but now I look at it. Um, sadly, you're gonna take the money out of it, but thank you for what you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Public comment is now closed. Comments from the council?
I would like to move this third reading.
Second. We have a motion to move to third reading and a second. Um, it's not upon the vote, please.
Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Please, please read this ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance on third reading by title only. Approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Riverboat and Rainy Day Funds for infrastructure, water sewer extension to the annexed property on the city's east side, and this is introduced by Ms. Dyche, Mr. Paul Prespolinski and Mr. Simmons.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Uh, Councilman Prespolinski?
I just wanna say that this is a a leftover from the previous administration. And it irritates me to no end to think that this project was uh okayed and uh with no fiscal planning. This was laid on us after we took office. Besides, the previous administration leaving us, what was it, three point four million in the red? Thank you. Sickening.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
I move for adoption.
We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Dyche and a second by Councilman Paul Prespolinski. It's not upon the vote, please.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Ordinance is approved. Miss, now can you read our next ordinance by title alone?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Engineering Department of the General Fund for On-Call Engineering Services, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Engineering Department of the General Fund for On-Call Engineering Services with Hoffman Associates and Premier Engineering for twenty twenty-three, and this is introduced by Ms. Dyche.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Nyla. Uh, comments from the sponsor?
Yes, so a couple of things. Uh, myself and Councilman um Don Prespolinski did um have a conversation um with our Human Resource Director, Tatianisha. Just lost her name over. George. Anyway, um, she had some good ideas. We talked about, um, she reposted, um. Uh, so I haven't gotten any feedback, and maybe uh Mr. uh Prespolinski be, will be able to uh add more, but um she, she did a couple of different things and how she's posting the position to see if we can get some different hits. Um, talked to her about some recommendations on uh, you know, contacting some other municipalities. One of the things we discussed is when you, when you post something per time, people tend not to look at it. They, you know, and it's really truly thirty hours is full-time in a sense. So um, we're hoping that she gets more hits because previously she only received one. Um, and they were way on the west coast of town. So a couple of things, um, in twenty seventeen, we spent approximately approximately two hundred four thousand dollars, two, two thousand five hundred, two hundred five thousand dollars um, in engineering costs. Twenty eighteen, seven hundred and one thousand, and in twenty nineteen, um, one point, um, a little over a million dollars for engineering services, but that was a, an election year, so a lot of streets and roads got paved. Um, so um, it's since COVID though, um, we've, our costs have been approximately around a hundred twenty-seven to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, we haven't had an engineer for a while now, and this funding is specifically for on-call services so that we can um uh have, you know, engineering services for projects that we have. Um, even though we didn't turn in our CCMG, but that's a whole nother story. Um, but that's, this is what this is for. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dyche. Uh, this is our formal public hearing. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Comments from the council? Uh, Councilman Paul Prespolinski?
Um, I, I wanna say that I do uh I'm aware of those uh figures that uh Councilwoman Dyche brought up. And uh I also wanna make a point that we did have an engineer on staff at that time. And uh I believe that um, one of those years that was high, they did the PACE study. The Pacer study, but I, I wanna address the amount of money that we're talking about here for a, a firm, a firm that is not even in the city of Michigan City or Lepore County. Is that we're sending our money out of our community when we have firms here in our community and Lepore County that are civil engineers, are engineers, architects, and that I believe that they uh I, I believe that, yes, we should try to get an engineer on board. But I believe that three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is that we should use more firms in our county. I really believe that, and that there's no valid reason not to support local firms. There, then it just doesn't make any sense to me when these people are here and they have a vested interest in our community. So um, with, with that being said, um, I think that I'm gonna ask for a separation of vote on these uh, this funding mechanism. On uh, a vote, a vote on the uh three hundred and uh, or two, three hundred, is it two fifty for uh Primera and fifty thousand for uh um, Haas and Associates for the remainder of twenty twenty-three?
Do we wanna order, can I ask council?
Yes.
Legal. So do we have to do that in the form of an amendment, or do we split it out? How, how does that happen?
He's making a motion.
Okay, so.
I don't want to put work in this month, but that's what you were doing, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we're gonna make a motion for separation of vote on, on the funds.
We need to find the amendments.
The amount for Haas and Associates is fifty thousand. And the amount for Primera, I believe, is three hundred thousand.
That wouldn't add up.
So I'm not amending the amount, so I'm just asking for a separation of vote to vote on each fund, funding mechanism. So.
On third reading.
Second.
On second reading.
On second reading. So the, the motion is to separate the funding for Haas and Association in an amount of fifty thousand dollars and amount to Primera in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars.
I believe that's the correct amount. Is that the, is that the correct amount? Mary Lynn, say it.
Yeah, but that wouldn't add up, except three hundred.
Okay, then here, here's, here's what, here's what I'll do. I'll re, remove that motion. If somebody remove that second and we'll, we'll talk about it on third reading.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilman.
Okay.
Any other comments from the council? Any other comments from the council? And it's a build over for third reading. Wait, we, no, we're still.
Yeah, but that was all just found that.
Yeah, we didn't. No, this is our formal public hearing, so any comments from the public?
You did do that.
We did. We got spun around, okay.
Okay.
Alright, so we're back to. Not. So they'll be held over for third reading. Yeah, so, uh, we read the next ordinance on, uh, second reading. By title only.
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP coronavirus local physical recovery fund for the sixth addition to the initial plan for use of portions of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for the purchase of street, of a street loader, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Dabney, and Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Any comments from the sponsor? Any comments from the sponsor? Uh, Councilman. Comments from the public. This is our formal public hearing. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Uh, comments from the council.
Mr. President, I'd like to have third reading tonight.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to move to third reading by Councilman Don Prespolinski and a second by Councilman Paul Prespolinski. Miss Nyla upon the vote, please.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Can you please read this ordinance on third reading?
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP coronavirus local physical recovery fund for the sixth addition to the initial plan for the use of portions of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for the purchase of the street loader, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Dabney, and Ms. Jacobs.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the sponsor? Comments from the public?
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. You guys are appropriate. Give them the money for all this equipment at the street department. Uh, Faye Cranston is here, um. He can say the same thing I'm finna say. You keep buying equipment, but it sits outside. Deterrates, cause more problems. They need a new building and they need to be separate from each other. Every other county has this, they do it, every other city has it, they updated their buildings. Have y'all even been down there to look at the inside of those buildings? Where the, where the workers eat at, where they have to sit at? I mean, at some point, you need to just look at the overall picture. They need a new building, and we need to get it done sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick.
Yeah, Tommy Klobic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I do have some good news, uh, my new, our street department director, Mr. Sean Smith, he tells me that all those thoroughfares are gonna get stripped. He said they're just gonna come in and stripe them off, and, you know, just every one of them, so I think that's great news, especially on my, my block. I'm having an accident about every, every, about once every, two every, twice a year, about once every, every six months, so I'm just really happy to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klobic. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Don Prespolinski.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Don Prespolinski and a second by Councilman Paul Prespolinski. It's not upon the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
An ordinance is approved. It's not, can you read our next ordinance on second reading by title?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP coronavirus local physical recovery fund for the sixth addition in the initial plan for use of portions of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for the park improvements, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Jacobs.
Any comments, our sponsors? Any comments from the sponsor? Comments from the public? This is our formal public hearing. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Comments from the council?
Uh, Mr. President, yeah, I'd like to have third reading on this ordinance tonight also. Second.
I have a motion to have third reading on this ordinance by Councilman Don Prespolinski and a second by Councilman Dabney. Um, it's not upon the vote, please.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have eight in favor, and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Please read this ordinance on third reading.
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP coronavirus local physical recovery fund for the sixth addition to the initial plan for use of a portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for the park improvements, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Yeah, I have a question.
Councilwoman Deitch.
Uh, can you, um, remind us what, what the two, uh, allotments are for? So that, for the public? I don't know if, um, the sponsors can share that? Or someone from the park department? Thank you.
Was it Patriot Park? I'd leave those, uh.
Good evening, Ed Shin, Superintendent of the Park Department, one hundred East Michigan Boulevard. The three allotments in this resolution would be the fencing at Patriot Park, the senior center project, uh, new flooring and office relocation, and the truck that the park department needs so badly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Shea.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council, uh, Councilman?
I gotta, I have a question. We talked about, um, the superintendent Shin about the, uh, truck. Did you look at any other, uh, um, you talked about it being a half ton and did you guys go and, uh, get any additional information on getting a heavier, heavier truck?
Yes, sir, uh, you requested that we looked for that and we did find a three-quarter ton truck.
So with, wow, with an additional appropriation?
We actually put some money into this from our concession fund.
Alright.
Pay the balance.
Very good. With a nice V plow and a.
I'm not sure if it's a V plow or a straight blade.
I'm getting, I'm getting a knife. Alright, it sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Dabney.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and second by Councilwoman Deitch. Um, it's not upon the vote, please.
President, I did have one more comment.
Uh, Councilman.
Yeah. Since I know the councils, you know, were approving this funding, and especially for those footings with that fence out there, 'cause I looked at that picture again tonight, and it really amazes me how those footings came out of the ground. And I know, I believe I stated this at the last council meeting, that to get a warranty, is ever gonna put these footings in the ground, that they don't pop out again? Okay, so tonight we're gonna approve the funding, and I guess the park board would probably approve the contract to whoever is gonna do this concrete work, but before, I would like to see that contract come back to the council to see exactly what kind of warranty the park department got for their money.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh.
And Ms. Island, is that in the record? Okay, thank you.
Would that be just, just like a FYI?
Communication.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, we have a motion and a, a second. It's not upon the vote, please.
Ms. Deitch. Aye. Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Jerma.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, uh, ordinance is approved. Ms. Nyla, can you please read our third, uh, next ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP coronavirus local physical recovery fund for the sixth addition to the initial plan for use of portions of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies, um, infrastructure for the city's east side annexed property, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Dabney, Ms. Jacobs, Mr. Paul Prespolinski, and Mr. Simmons.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the sponsors? Uh, council? Councilman Prespolinski?
Um, this, uh, appropriation with the other monies that was, that was, were approved will bring in, uh, us, the total to, uh, seven million five hundred thousand dollars that on combined revenues that the city's paying for this annexation of, I'll call it, uh, plan liability, and, uh, I, I believe that at some point we need to have a, a looksee on the, uh, sitting down, I don't know, uh, I guess this comment, Jewel can add in on it for me. Is, is there any way that we can, uh, do anything about the fiscal plan for that property with, with the owners at this point?
In terms of what? Doing?
Modifying it because that fiscal plan says we're responsible for infrastructure, uh, not just delivering the service to the property, but we're liable for infrastructure inside the four hundred and twenty acres.
Sure, and it could be made to modify the fiscal plan, but that'd be subject to their agreement and successful negotiation, but, but it, in theory, sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the sponsors? Uh, this is our formal public hearing. Comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Comments from the, uh, council?
Yes, I moved, I, um, moved that, we moved to third reading.
Second.
I have a motion to move a third reading by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilman Paul Prespolinski. It's not upon the vote, please.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Can you please raise that, this ordinance on third reading?
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP coronavirus local physical recovery fund for the sixth addition to the initial plan for use of portions of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies, infrastructure for the city's east side annexed property, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Dabney, Ms. Jacobs, Mr. Paul Prespolinski, and Mr. Simmons.
And co, thank you, Ms. Nyla. Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the council?
I move for adoption.
Uh, we have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Don Prespolinski. Um, it's not upon the vote, please.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr., Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
And Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla, uh, ordinance passed. Can you please read our, uh, next ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the public safety local income tax lit fund for the purchase of a fire truck, and this is introduced by Ms. Jacobs and Mr. Dabney and corresponded by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Don Prespolinski and Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Any comments from the sponsors? Councilman Paul Prespolinski.
Well, I just wanted to say that, um, as I talked about at our last meeting about having something concrete to, uh, know what we're buying, that, uh, I made a phone call yesterday and received a email, uh, information today from the fire department. I like to thought, thank Deputy Chief Jezneski, uh, for providing this information that so it's read into the record what we're supposed to be getting. It's a chassis type enforcer. Body type, pumper. Price per unit, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand and four hundred dollars. And, uh, the stock unit is four oh two two nine. So hopefully, um, the, uh, we won't have a problem with, uh, receiving this truck. I got all the, uh, the, the, all the, uh, specs on it, on what it's gonna come with. I appreciate that. But I don't, I wanna say this is I think that personally, I don't think I should have had to ask for this information. I think it should have been brought forward to the finance committee to, uh, give that information to the council. So, the problem being with, you know, the fire department and the equipment is very expensive and we need to know what we're purchasing. And we're gonna have additional purchases there. So, we need to come up with a plan and it behooves the fire department to come up, the administration to come up with a plan on what the heck we're gonna buy and, and how we're gonna purchase it. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman. Uh, any other comments from the sponsors? Councilman, uh, Doc Prespolinski.
Yeah, Mr. President, I moved that we have, uh, third reading?
Second.
On this ordinance tonight?
Yeah, give it our fin, it's the first reading.
Okay.
Any other comments from the sponsors?
I removed my second.
Yeah, this is our formal, this is our formal public hearing. Uh, any comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Klobic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm very excited. We're gonna get this new fire truck. It's gonna be a pumper. I just wanna say ding ding ding, here comes a fire truck, fire truck ding ding ding, get out of the way. Fireman, if I want, put the fire out, fireman, whatever, put the fire out. Thank you, Mr. Mrs. Fireman. Thank you, Mr. Mrs. Fire. Ding ding ding, get out of the way.
And moving on, um, any comments from the public?
Good evening, council. Double goal, Michigan City Fire Chief, um. Just wanna give you a quick update. I sent out an email just, just in case you didn't have a chance to read it, but, um, the truck got listed on Friday. The salesman got me, uh, the information Monday afternoon on, uh, the stuff that Councilman Paul Prespolinski is speaking of. So I forwarded to you guys yesterday morning, or this morning, I'm sorry. So all the information's in there, and that's the timeline that I got the information, so I got it to you soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Uh, any comments from the public?
Barrett Taylor, Michigan City Fire Department, President, firefighters, uh, union. Uh, I wanna speak on something I said to, to last week or a couple of weeks ago at the meeting. last week or a couple of weeks ago at the meeting about raises and, you know, we get all the equipment. If we don't have people to use the equipment, it's useless. And Mr. Dabney talked about getting, we need equipment. Well, if we don't have equipment, we can't do our jobs either. So if anybody's on the fence about this fire truck, I want you guys to think about this. Tonight, we had a fire up in the corner of, uh, this afternoon. We had a co- a fire at the corner of Ninth and Pine. We had a fire engine breakdown. I don't know if the chief knows about that, but I was notified. We had a tr- uh, an engine breakdown. It couldn't respond to a medical call that it was gonna need to go to. Apparently, they do have the truck up and running, but that's not a good, that's not a good thing. And I hope that's not a sign of things to come with that truck because that particular truck, other than engine one and three that we have right now that are four or five years old, that's our next newest truck, our next as far as age wise, and it's hitting eleven years old right now. And what we're replacing right now is actually engine two, used to be engine two was a Quint, had a ladder on top, was basically an Ariel. We're replacing that with an engine. Because right now that truck does not work. It's been replaced by a two thousand and seven engine and we're replacing that engine. So basically, once this gets replaced, we're gonna have a new engine. We're gonna have one that's four, five, or two of them that are four or five years old. The next one's eleven years old. If we, we, uh, we break down right now, if that truck breaks down right now, if we have a truck breaks down, we're gonna have to use another sixteen year old engine. I know eight hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. This is something that's needed to be taken care of for years and for some reason has fell off. It didn't get kept up with. Um, so all I'm saying is for the safety of the citizens and letting us do our job, we, we need these things. It, it is a lot of money, but when you look at it, you're not purchasing these, you're purchasing these, purchasing these things every twelve, fifteen years maybe. You know? Because what's gonna happen now with this eleven year old truck that's breaking down, you're gonna end up with a lot of maintenance costs on that. So I know you guys understand that, but I just wanna bring that to your attention. It, you know, just today, we had a truck breakdown and just like Chief Legault said, we had a fire. We had engine couldn't pump. You had to put, you had to put volunteers on standby. That's not good. We can't be, we can't be like that. Because that's putting its citizens in jeopardy also. I know, like I said, I know you guys understand that. I know it's a lot of money. But if anybody's on the fence about it, just think about that when you make your decision. Right?
Thank you. Uh, any comments, uh, from the public? Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Comments from the council? This president, councilman, uh, Doc Presblesky.
Yeah, I'd like to have this on, uh, third reading this evening.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Doc Presblesky to read this on third reading and seconded by Councilwoman Deitch. Uh, it's not up on the vote, please.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Can you please read this ordinance on third readings?
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the public safety local income tax lit fund for the purchase of a fire truck. And this is introduced by Ms. Jagus and Mr. Dabney and co-sponsored by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Don Presbleinsky, and Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Any comments from the sponsors? Councilman Paul Presblesky.
Um, I, I just wanna respond to what was said earlier is that I do, uh, understand the, uh, need for, uh, equipment at the fire department. And I, I've been going and, uh, met with the, uh, chief and assistant chief at the fire department and also gathering information. And I, I think that I, I just wanna say this to the general public. We took office three years ago. And at that time, one of the engine, one of the pieces of equipment was twenty-four years old, I believe. So I'm aware of it. Maybe some other people aren't aware of it. But maybe we need to have a workshop and put lay this all out on the table so people know what's going on here because I take it very seriously about police and fire protection and city services is that when you want a fire truck, when you want a fireman, you want, you need a fireman or firemen. And when you need a police officer, you need a police officer. When you need your streets plowed, you need your streets plowed. When you need your garbage picked up, you need your garbage picked up. Or if you need a special pickup, whatever you might need. But I wanna say this is that I cannot believe what I'm looking at in the fire department on, on how some of this equipment was ignored. And I am not blaming, cannot blame anyone that's sitting up here right now. But I assure you that I'm gonna make sure that I'm gonna, I'm gonna be crying about it. Because if I need to be rescued, I own a two-story house. I wanted, I want somebody, and I'm very, I remember when we bought, when we got the Quint. And that was for, I thought it was for the purposes of close in, uh, second story rescues in, in Beachwalk. And so we got a lot, we got a lot of stuff to do, but I don't know how fast we're gonna get it done. We gotta, we have to prioritize what we're gonna, the next purchase. Thank you. And I'm definitely in favor of this purchase.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you.
Comments from the council? Councilman, uh, still public?
Yeah, we're doing, uh, I just have one comment.
After that, I got a little thrown off.
No?
Yep.
Okay, council comment.
Council. Yeah, sponsors.
Okay, uh, just a comment referring back to what the, uh, union president said. And, you know, I, I hear a lot from a, a lot of people and, you know, in the fire department, whichever side of the fence you're on. And I, I believe what has to happen here is the chief and I talked to him about getting this truck committee together. And whatever other issues are going on with the equipment, these things have to be brought to light. I mean, you don't have to bring them all to the city council, but I mean, they should be worked together, get the problems down on it, on paper. Get the money appropriated and get this stuff fixed and be done with it. You know, I, I hear a lot of things and I'm not saying, I mean, sooner or later, you just gotta, hey, let's get the team together. Right? Chief, get the team together. All right, what do we need? Get it prioritized and let's get a plan in place and get it done and be done with this. Cause as everyone in room knows, public safety is number one. And it's, it's always gonna be number one. And we have to be prepared with our equipment to be able to provide that service. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Uh, any other comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Move for adoption.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Doc Presblesky. Um, it's not up on the vote, please.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Definitely, aye.
Mr. Excuse me. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, uh, ordinance passes. Uh, we're gonna take a five-minute break before we define our ordinance. Um, I'd like to get this last ordinance on first reading. Um, it's now, please.
An ordinance. An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Riverboat Fund for legal services to contest the proposed NIPSCO rate increase. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Is there a comment from the sponsor?
Um, this is a ordinance following up from the resolution that we passed earlier in a meeting on, uh, taking on legal counsel to, uh, represent us with the utility, Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. And also earlier that there was, um, um, adoption of a, uh, amendment to the, uh, resolution of fifteen thousand dollars. And I'm not sure if that we can make that on, uh, I don't have that to read as because it's already been passed. So the, or, uh, we have to legally?
The, I have, maybe can offer that amendment after council comment.
Yeah, but I didn't, I didn't have, I didn't make anything out on paper.
We can, but we follow up.
Oh, uh.
Yeah.
No, I got, yes, I have that.
I have. Any other comments from?
You wanna use that?
We have.
All right.
Okay, uh, comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Yeah. I would, uh, uh, Paul Presblesky.
For Doc Presblesky.
Uh, yeah, I just, for clarification.
Yeah.
So so I added, we went through the amendment during the resolution. So do I have to introduce this amendment again for the ordinance? Okay. So at this time, I would like to add this amendment to the ordinance that basically what we're doing is reducing the legal services and we're putting a not to exceed amount from twenty thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars. That's the gist of the amendment.
Thank you, councilman. We have a motion to amend by Councilman Don Presblesky and a second by Councilwoman Deitch. Ms. Nyla, want to vote, please?
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Uh, sir, oh yeah, we're on the council comment. Any other comments from the council?
I, I believe that we, uh, covered it.
Okay.
In our discussions on the, uh, resolution and that the fund, I gave a copy so that the fund is, uh, Gail's got the correct information.
Hey, thank you, councilman.
Aye.
This ordinance will be held over for second reading. New business. Uh, FYI, Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Comic Council regarding his appointment of Larry Zimmer to the Michigan City Historic Preservation Commission term will begin immediately and expire March fifteenth of twenty twenty-six. FYI, we need to vote on that?
Mm-hmm.
No.
That we give the advice and consent for Mr. Larry Zimmer's?
And we have a motion by Councilwoman Deitch.
I'll second it.
Give the vice and consent and seconded by Councilwoman Deitch. I mean, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ziegus, Ms. Nyla, want to vote, please?
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Nyla. Congratulations, Mr. Zimmer. FYI, Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Comic Council regarding his appointment of Ms. Jamie Lawrence to the Human Rights Commission term will begin immediately and expire November second twenty-five.
Motion to, uh, vote on this appointment.
Uh, we have a motion to give advice and consent, uh, by Councilwoman, Councilman Don Presblesky and seconded by Councilwoman Deitch. It's not up on the vote, please.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Uh, congratulations, Ms. Lawrence. Uh, unfinished business. Twenty twenty-three council committee assignments. Nomination, uh, and vote twenty twenty-three members of the following council committee assignment, social status African-American males. Is there a nomination? I'm sorry.
Oh, are you, you opening nominations? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need to nominate someone for the
Okay.
For the social status. Are any nominations?
I have two.
Attorney Harris, can you please advise? We have no nominations for an appointment to, uh?
We have two. We're supposed to vote on.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. She could send us a notification.
We should change. Okay.
Maybe receive the correspondence. Yes, that's correct.
I'm sorry.
There does need to be a nomination now, or you're talking about?
Yeah, but there was no nomination. I called for one and no one nominated.
Then there's no business.
So it's still unfinished?
It's still unfinished.
And the economic development work, is that still unfinished?
There, there's no need for a vote for economic development. We don't vote on that.
Okay.
No, we don't vote. I, I'm sorry, we didn't, I received the correspondence.
Okay.
Was.
So that's resolved.
Ms. Jagus.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, we have our twenty twenty-three council committee assignments. Uh, nominations, the council has the following appointments to the Michigan City Social Status African-American Males. Term expires February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and are all one-year terms. Any comments? Uh, resign, Ministerial Association, uh, Linda Fay Conley and the Voice PD Willie Millsap, Swanson Center, Rodney McCormick, MC President, Dwayne Hurt, Michigan City Area Schools.
We see any letters?
Are those the nominations? Do we have any, uh, letters from the organizations?
No, we have not received any.
So then we proceed with this. Go to the next. Okay, uh, so next, uh, we have a vote. The council has one appointment to the Michigan City Social Status African-American Males. Uh, a city president term will begin immediately and expire February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four nominations, uh, Rodney McCormick and Michael Jones. Uh, Mr. McCormick?
May I address the council, please? Um, I am going to accept an appointment from Mayor Dwayne Perry. He has placed me, um, he's gonna put me on the social status, so I'm gonna withdraw my name at this time. Um, I, I also wanna say that watching this process play out makes me sick to my stomach. Um, I've seen board members give in to public criticism. Um, promises that I will vote for you or I won't vote for you. Or I'll show up at your house late at night. This stuff is getting ridiculous. I personally glad that it's over with. Um, we started this mission three years ago to make this board makeup almost the way it, we designed it. Um, me and Sean Fitzpatrick, we worked day and night getting people placed on this council. Not everyone, but quite few, few of you. Um, and now I, I feel like, um, the rest of the group, uh, you get stabbed in your back and you've done everything you could as a foot soldier to be loyal to people. It's shameful. The public deserve better. You selling your votes to people who won't knock on the door, who don't care about the city, who won't do anything. They're not here today. They won't be here tomorrow. All they do is talk, 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 talk about hating someone. And some of the pastors that get up here and say these things should be ashamed. I'm not going nowhere. Nobody's gonna scare me away. I'm not moving. I'm running for the first award. And when I get up here, I promise you, I will not sell my vote or my integrity or any promises whatsoever. And I just wanna make sure I clear this rumor up. I was provoked by Ms. Deitch. And people are saying that I'm running her campaign. I don't run H Nelson's campaign or Ms. Deitch's campaign. I'm not a part of that campaign. I don't represent her. I don't represent nobody. I represent Rodney McCormick and Rodney McCormick Jr. I represent Rodney McCormick and Rodney McCormick Junior. I represent my family. And if the first ward vote for me, I'm gonna represent the first ward to the best of my ability. It's shameful that we're doing this the way y'all done this. Loyalty should mean something. Should mean something. I've been with you guys through the good and bad. Sometimes I don't agree with you on your politics, but it has never been personal. And uh, these last three years has been personal, disrespectful and wrong. Paul, I appreciate you voting for me, supporting me. Sean, anytime you guys need me, I'm always be there. Jean, we made a lot of uh, we became friends during your term. But this should never happen again. I wish everybody the best of luck on come the election. Um, there will be at least five new board members up here, and I hope that I'll be I'll be one of those new five board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Um. See, we have one nomination and only one to vote for. Ms. Nidel, upon the vote, please, for Michael Jones.
Um. Point of order. Since uh Mr. McCormick removed his uh. Name, do you think we should leave this open for till our next meeting to see if anybody else?
Uh, we already had nominations and closed nominations, so we're.
All right.
We're voting this. Thank you. Ms. Nidel, upon the vote, please.
Ms. Deitch.
Hi. Uh, yeah, I.
Mr. Don Prespinski.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Ms. Jagus.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Prespinski.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
And Mr. Matt.
Oh, hi.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Here's your microphone.
I know it is, but sorry.
Thank you. Uh, nomination, the council has.
Did you want me to redo that?
I think it picked up.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the council has one appointment to the Michigan City Tree Board term expires February fifteenth, twenty twenty three, and. Is a one-year term. And comment Laura Henderson, representing Elston Grove Neighborhood Association. Uh. Is there nominations?
We did receive a letter from Eastport um renominating uh reappointing. Uh, also, I'm sorry, Elston Grove from Laura Henderson.
We need to take nominations for that, right? There are any nominations?
Yes, I I'd like to nominate Laura Henderson for the uh tree board.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Come, Ms. Nidel, want to vote?
A second. We need it.
Mr. Don Prespinski.
We have the motion by Councilwoman Jagus and second by Councilwoman Deitch, so on the vote.
Okay, sorry. Okay. Mr. Don Prespinski.
Is that me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Yeah.
Mr. Don Prespinski.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Simmons.
Support.
Uh, Ms. Jagus.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Prespinski.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
And Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Yeah, Mr. President. I actually didn't say aye. I was saying thank you, and she went on to the next one, so. So I vote for Henderson.
Okay, so it's a clear view at all. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, nomination, the council has one appointment business to the Michigan City Urban Enterprise Association due to Ms. Esther Gunchen. Resignation from her appointment. Term begins immediately and expires seven thirty first, twenty twenty four. Uh, are there any nominations or any letters of?
We received one application from Mr. Ken Fly Sr.
Well, uh, can you repeat that, mister? I didn't hit. I didn't get it. Okay. Are there any nominations?
But so is this the only?
Nominations.
That was only application?
That's only.
Okay. Ms. Nidel, upon the vote, please?
We have to nominate first.
Point, point of, point of order. Uh, so he's to be nominated for this Urban Enterprise Association. Does he have to live down there? This is for the downtown area.
Of business. I'm not sure.
Does he have a business in that area? Okay. I'm not, I didn't, I didn't know. I'm just asking you the knowledge I know, you know, this board, that you have to have a business. Down in that area. Does that count? That's fine.
Yes, I'm a member in the urban enterprise zone, and that is true. You either have to live. An urban enterprise zone, or you have to have a business in the urban enterprise zone and benefit the people from the urban enterprise zone. And Mr. Fly, I do believe uh meet the criteria.
And I think he lives in the uh urban enterprise zone as well. I'm, I don't know that for sure.
This is the business. There are several ones that you have to, and this is the business one. He has to own a business.
It's an, so, so I think if it's a nonprofit, is that okay?
It is. Yes, and he does own a nonprofit.
I know. I I definitely know that.
Are there any nominations?
Yes, um, Mr. Kenny Fly. This is um our appointment that's effective immediately.
That's true. We have a nice combination. Uh, for Mr. Kent Fly by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Paul Prespinski. Snail, want to vote, please?
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Mr. Ms. Jagus.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Prespinski.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
And Mr. Don Prespinski.
Hi.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nidel. Comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Um. It was comments made earlier when Mr. Mac brought to the council. Trying to deal with some of the issues in our community, addressing our kids. Um. I have two twelve, I have a twelve-year-old and a thirteen-year-old that's still in school. I have a neighborhood full of kids. Um, I guess that's the common denominator between Maryville and Hammond. Some of the things that our kids was compared to, I take offense to it. Our kids should be our priority. I don't know where y'all come, I don't know where. Why you guys don't see this? I agree. The the price is outrageous. But we do have to come together and do something for these kids. Like it or not, I know as hard as I'm fifty-five, I can't remember when I was a kid. But I do have a chance and opportunity, God bless me, to see two of my kids still in school. And still don't have certain things they can do. I'm sicking that the ARP money was held up hostage and wasn't used uh. For playgrounds, especially playgrounds in the first ward. Uh. Ridgeland Playground, we had playgrounds that we could have put this money to use. Gardena Park got glass backboards. The King, Dr. King Park or the King Center Park, we still playing with the same equipment when I was a kid. How can you explain that? How can you justify that? We was promised by. I was promised that Ed Chen promised me that they was gonna change the name of the park out there, which I don't know who named that park that. Me and Jean, we from that area. I was born and raised on Victory Street. That's where I'm from. My heart will always be there. We gotta start looking into these playgrounds. Every money y'all do have with that ARP funds, I might wanna try to invest in just all the parks. That's been neglected and um. Just forgotten about. We like to have glass backboards. Mr. Dabney, you used to play basketball with me all the time. Michael, we used to watch you play basketball. You too old. But. When you love to have back, glass backboards, our kids wanna run the Gardena Park. Hey, now we are falling that concrete that we have, and it tears skin off them. You fall in the Gardena Park, you bounce back up. We have to do something. Better than what we're doing. You can't keep ignoring our neighborhoods. You cannot. I I I just don't get it, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Uh, Bear Taylor, Michigan City Fire Department, firefighters, union president. Uh, as I heard tonight, it was communication made by the police, the FOP president. To uh request the negotiations, where, request the contract be opened back up for negotiations as soon as possible. Uh, just to let you all know, on behalf of IFF Local Four Seven Five, Michigan City firefighters. I will be getting that into the clerk's office, so you guys will have our communication for the same at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, and also the new Fire America Commissioner. I'd like to remind all of Michigan City and the council that we are approaching a very uh special, well, kind of my own special, but. It was uh July thirteenth, nineteen seventy-three, the the inferno that destroyed the Pullman Railcar Shops occurred. Um, no, that's now on the site where Lighthouse Place Premium Outlet now stands. Um. So. Uh, you know, the God bless us that day, the winds on that summer day were blowing out of the south, and it carried all the embers of the fire over the lake. If the, if it was blown in the other direction, it had been on the scale of the Great Chicago Fire of eighteen seventy-one. So I think there ought to be a commemoration or even a marrow proclamation about that, make it be like Pullman Standard Railcar Shop Day in Michigan City. I also wanna give condolences to my dear friend Jeff Santana and his wife Julie. Jeff, he was a public servant, I know. He he epitomized the word public servant. Uh, he was my friend for thirty years. Ever since he was officiating girls' and boys' basketball games at Michigan City High School, that's how I first got to know I. Got to know Julie, 'cause she was my dental hygienist at Dr. Wendy Parker's office. But he, he, he gonna be sorely missed. I'm just a great, great man. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman, uh, Dan.
Yep, uh, real quick, uh, talking about the ARP funds. And and what was, what happened with the ARP funds? We, we started about sixteen million dollars. Uh, sixteen point three, I believe to be exact, and we've been spending that money. Um. But I don't have the list exactly what was going on, but we've been replacing a lot of equipment. Uh, for our city workers, because you know, the people have forgotten now. That what has happened or what did happen when COVID hit us, we stopped all capital spending. So we were trying to rotate police cars. We were trying to do fire trucks. All of that was put on hold. Uh, for a couple of years with no capital spending. Um, so now we're, we're really in catch-up mode in, in terms of doing those type of things. Um, so. I wish that we had more ARPA funds that we could do other things with. But the, the, we believe we had an ARPA committee, we didn't came along to the council. And what we brought was approved, so everyone obviously agree what was going on. And I wanted to address the thing about the parks. I know that the parks are a good talking point, but we did redo Walker Street Park. Um, up there, there was money put into Walker Street Park. There is something going on now with Water Tower Park. Um, that's, that's gonna happen this summer. That'll be uh finished up this summer. And then we have uh money going in for Don, uh, Prespinski brought that up regarding uh Washington Park. So we got something that's in the, in line with Washington Park. And then also there was a brand-new park put behind the police station. Um, as well, with all the new proper fall zones and everything that we need now, when you start to redo a park. You have to make them ADA accessible, which then drives the prices sky high. So it's, it's really tough. But I agree with the sentiment about, about the parks, but they are gonna require some funding. Uh, some, some big funding uh to do those major renovations to those parks. So. I think we're on the right track with a lot of that. Um, so I, I'm, I'm glad to be involved with the park department. Uh, to do some of those things as well, and uh. It's gonna be interesting coming around i- in our, our meetings now. Uh, it is election time coming up. And it's gonna be interesting to see what happens. Um, so I look forward to it. I think it's gonna be fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Paul, uh, Don Prespinski.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, just in uh response to the uh, to the parks. And uh, there is only so much money that can go around. And I know that we have ARP money and. I guess I can say about when I think of that ARP money, thank God that the Congress. And President Biden sent, you know, figured out where to get this money from and sent it down to the cities. Cause without sixteen million dollars being sent to Michigan City. We wouldn't have been able to purchase all the things that we're doing to upgrade the equipment that we need to operate the city. And, you know, I, I agree uh. With what Mr. McCormick was saying, that, you know, I also believe that more money could have been spent in certain ways. Uh, I expressed my opinion uh as far as the parks go. And yeah, I am working on a project for the Feder- Federal's Alley. Playground down there and been working on that project for two and a half years now with the park department. With uh Shannon Eason and, and Ed Shin, maybe two years. But anyway, uh. Yeah, we're trying to make that come alive. Uh, you know, if you think about it, if you go through Federal's Alley and you look at that playground equipment. And a, and a lot of equipment in, in, and not all the parks, but in some of the parks. I mean, this equipment goes back to the. Seventies, you know, some of the stuff is sixty years old already. And, you know, I remember somebody swings that are in the playground. I used to swing on and. You know, I, I don't see him being. All that unsafe, but that's in my mind, you know, I don't, you know, I know what I had fun on, but you know, times have changed. And like Councilman Dabney said, he had different rules and regulations, OSHA, AVA and everything like that. And I believe that the park system, and we need to uh. Start encouraging the park system to possibly do more uh with the parks to uh upgrade them. But anyway, so just getting back to the ARP money, I just thank uh the federal government for sending that money to us. And being able to do what we uh, we were able to do. Uh, and just, I know we had the uh grand opening. It's not a gigantic business, but I think it's a business well needed on that side of town is the uh new Dunkin'. Donut drive-through on Michigan Boulevard, and uh speaking to the owner there. His, his name was Doron Batu. He's the manager. He also owns the Dunkin' Donuts on South Franklin Street. And uh him and I had a discussion, and he says that by summertime, he's looking at eighteen to twenty-two folks. To be working there, and he's already hired fortified people out of the. Uh residential area, just a couple of blocks within the Dunkin' Donuts. So I said that that was great. That's the whole idea of putting a business like that on that side of town is to get the neighborhood uh. Involved and also had the opportunity to attend the Black History Month Celebration. Uh, myself, Councilwoman Deitch was there, and I know she may have a few words to say about it. But it was a uh, a very well put together, very moving. Uh, program Marty Corley and his committee, Black History Month Committee need to be commended for that. And the uh, the young lady that spoke, uh, Ms. Kelly. She was a Michigan City High School graduate and a judge down in Dallas, Dallas, Texas. Yeah, and did a fantastic job. So that, that was very, very nice, and I hope. Everybody here takes, takes time out to celebrate a part of Black History Month. There's a lot of things going on. If you go on the city website, I believe, uh. It's uh, it's being explained, so wanna give a shout out to uh those folks. And uh, Tommy, I, I wanna thank you for uh bringing that up about Jeff Santana. Uh. He was a city employee, great firefighter. Great referee, friend, basketball player, county councilman, and yes. Short and sweet, he will be sorely missed and uh, you know, condolences to his wife Julie. And appreciated uh very much what Jeff did. And appreciated uh very much what Jeff did. And then just one more shout out, cause I know Mike's here, Vincent from the Board of Works. And I had, had approached the uh Board of Works, I don't know, two months ago, three months ago. Talking about streetlights on Fulton Street. And that's when we were dealing with the uh. You know, shots being fired and. You know, like the wild, wild west in that, in that one city block. And so we had lights installed in the alley. In my request, because I got a request from a neighbor that lives in that block, two hundred block of Fulton. If he could have a streetlight put in there. So the Board of Works approved it. I took a ride by there the other night, saw the streetlight. It's fan, that has to be one of the brightest streetlights in Michigan City. I don't know where they got that one from, but that one's, that's amazing. Uh. And I spoke to the, the individual that contacted me about that light. And he says shots being fired in that neighborhood are. One to nothing anymore, so. Very appreciative of the Board of Works uh working with me and, and that uh. Resident there to make that neighborhood safe again. Thank you.
Donnie, we appreciate what. For us too in that neighborhood. Let me tell you, it was a scary place to be. And now Fulton's lit up, the alley's lit up, and we're all safe.
Councilman Deitch.
Oh yeah, thank you. Um first, let me say, um I appreciate the comments by um Mister McCormick. And um. And, and talking about, you know, appointments and things and. And the rhetoric in the community. I appreciate his comments, but I also appreciate the comments about. The parks, because we didn't have a fancy, any fancy places, but I played. Baseball, softball, basketball for different community centers and they were small. They weren't huge facilities, but. We had people who volunteered to do that, so um we still got ARPA money left. The mayor got mu- he has purse strings to, to bring it forward to the council. Um I know that they're gonna be announcing and I'm sure. Yeah, it is election time. We're gonna be announcing um. Nonprofits that are gonna be receiving these dollars from, from the ARPA funds, probably in March or April. Probably fancy checks um that are gonna be distributed, but also there's still money, a second wave of that money. Five hundred thousand dollars that's gonna be available later in the year. And there's a hundred, there's another million that's for workforce development that we haven't done anything with yet. Um and then outside of that, there's still about four million, give or take, that's available. Um for community things and, and one of the comments that. Many of us had said repeated, you know, repeatedly is that. We're gonna, ten years from now, we're gonna look back and be like, what did we do with that money? And the things that we purchased with, they're gonna be gone. And uh so this, this next four million is gonna be important, so I just wanna say that um. If anybody in the public, reach out to the mayor. If there's something that you believe is, is needed in the community, that. He's the first, first stop to get even on the agenda to talk about ARPA, so. Um make sure you talk to him. Um so a couple of things and yes, Black History Month, uh Judge Shaquita Kelly, she was awesome and. And she talked about our history and um the impact it has on our future. Um she's probably one of the most dynamic speakers I've ever heard. Um and you know, I attend a lot of events, but she was so dynamic and engaging. Um and I know it was recorded, so hopefully everybody can watch it on Alco. Um it's worth the view. Um but a couple of other um things that are happening, there's Black Cinema Night on Thursday's beginning um this week. And um this week they're showing Glory. Um it's at AMC Theaters from five thirty to seven thirty and it's free to the public. Every Thursday and um for the, this week is Glory. Next week forty-two and the following week will be um Selma. And after each one of these, and you know, I've had my niece and some other kids that, young adults that. Um they lead a discussion after each of those movies, which is probably more impactful than. Just watching the movie, but hearing young people and their perspective. Um so on the eleventh, we have the Quiz Bowl. And then on the eighteenth, so please go out to the Facebook page, um reach out to any of the um. The members on that um committee and then it should be on the website. So a lot of events happening um for that. Um next, there also was a grand opening and I, I wanna make sure, I point this out, that there is a small grocery store now. On the east side, Lolito's, um at two thousand three East Michigan Boulevard. There used to be um a beauty, a beauty school there and then it was a car lot. And now it's a small grocery. Please support. Um they've had some fresh fruit, uh fruits and vegetables. Um in there and different things, but they're trying to build up. But there is an option, at least it's a small option, a smaller option, but nonetheless an option. Um and they're um trying to get established. And then lastly, a couple of weeks ago, I would like to uh congratulate, we had about twenty-five law enforcement officers. That I'm a member of the uh Crisis Intervention Team and, and really what that was, we trained twenty-five law enforcement officers. A couple of weeks ago um in mental health, de-escalation tactics and understanding. Um mental health, when you arrive, we did role play. Well, I wa- I was in my actress mode that week, but. We did a lot of role playing uh where they had to come to cases where someone was having a mental crisis, mental health crisis. And uh we had many officers from uh the Sheriff's Department, LaPorte, Michigan City. Um Long Beach and I think one neighboring um. Uh community, but we're doing another set of officers in March. And um the cool thing about that, all these officers volunteered for it. And, and it, it was a whole week. It was a week-long training. They were there all five days. Um a- and I know that um. There's a difference in how you approach someone who's having a mental health crisis versus um a call for service for other things, but. Um training is probably more important than anything when you show up on the scene for someone having a mental health crisis. And arresting them is not necessarily the appropriate or right thing to do. And so um I just wanna commend the LaPorte um County Drug Free Task Force, because they're a part of this. Uh in bringing this also and um I think it's just a wonderful opportunity. Hopefully Michigan City will be able to get all their officers trained over the next year or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh Councilman Max.
Uh just real quick on the uh parks comments, and I, I agree, we're doing a fine job with our, with our parks. We've got quite a few of them, but the direction we should go shouldn't be the same as in the past, the uh outdoor parks. I've played ball at every one of them. I used to ride my bikes to them. I actually broke my arm in half on one of them, uh my senior year of college. The, the, the direction we need to be going is like everybody else, programming. Um and a rec director, uh somebody that actually is in charge of. Trying to find ways to match high skilled, high quality adults with the children that need. And as long as we do not have that. Attempt um in our community, it's gonna be a lot more difficult to uh, the, the police are not gonna fix the problem with youth. Uh from the eighth grade turning left or right by the time they get to twelfth grade. There's three, four, five year windows. That we create our citizens. And uh if, if we, we aren't on purpose with that, I think we're gonna get what a lot of other cities get that don't invest. In serious attempts to try to change behaviors and get children to go in different, different ways. Uh as to, as to the facility, the facility uh is not gonna cost twenty million dollars. The whole purpose of a study is, and I call it the cart before the horse. The, the study's purpose is to find out what is the maximum type of facility that we can have here. So you get a professional that has built these places already. And then they look at our market, look at our people, look at our finances, and what is the most we can get for our bucks? As opposed to. Me and a few councilmen getting together and trying to find the least we can do. Um we've done that. A couple of the basketball courts I've played on were because people said, you know, kids need something to do. Let's build a. Park. And so we built a basketball court and it satiated it, but those things are still there and they aren't being used to the degree that. They used to and they probably never will be, because the, the whole landscape of that is different now. The real, the real athletes are in AAU. They aren't at the playgrounds. The playgrounds now are for. You know, nobody wants one of those at, at too many times that they're at night. With uh just kids gathering around. Organized activity that can be structured with adults in charge. And adults making hard decisions on who can stay, who can go, how do we run it and teaching discipline. So uh I'm not gonna give up on it. Um and I'm gonna stake my pole in the ground on my belief that that is what we need and that, that is what we can do. So that's, that's all in comments.
Thank you, Councilman, uh Councilman Paul Preslinsky. Yeah, I just wanted to. Thank everybody for uh. Seeing through the uh. Common sense approach on this uh. Litigation to reduce our utility, to try to do something with our utility rate. Also uh. Uh I would like to say that. You know, Black History Month means something uh a lot of people and it makes me reflect on. Martin Luther King and his. Thoughts on all, always a nonviolent protest of the, the Gandhi aspect. And uh. Martin Luther King always preached love. And uh I, I can really appreciate that. Because I know that uh. That we, we need more of that. We need more of that in the world today. We don't need more uh. Dissension and aggravation and uh. Uh. People, people not even willing to work together. And find the common ground as, as people, you know? But I, I just wanna say that. I, I really do appreciate the thought and uh. A lot of, a lot, cause I, I was, that was a really rough time period. But also, what a lot of people forget in that movement. If you look at a lot of the uh. Pro- the uh protest signs. I don't remember ever them having a uh. Violence was always brought upon the protesters at that time period. But also, there were a lot of union movement behind that to get justice in the workplace. Not on, not only. For uh. The uh. Black movement, but for the movement on the shop floor. And uh. I think that that uh resonated through a lot of peo- through a lot of people. Of all, of all. Uh races and creeds. So as being a union member for over fifty years. And I've always made a point to represent everyone equally. And that is what I try to do on a daily basis. And that's something that my father told me a long time ago, is do the right thing. Paul, and always represent everyone equally. So. I just wanna say. And uh. Don't forget the Buffalo Soldiers. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Any other comments from the council? There are most still adjourned?
All should be adjourned.